There you go. So I didn't wanna, if you want that recorded.
Might turn on it?
Do that again now if you want. Minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
And once again, number first and a second. No more discussion, I presume. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shen?
Yeah.
Dr. Shakers?
Yes.
Mr. Walz?
Yes.
Now that we got the, the seat going down and out of the way. Mr. Slum, if you would, pick us up this Friday morning.
Good morning. Easy morning this morning, and I actually have no items of business for you. But if we do have one item of business, I think, um, we travel that line. Again, I have no item, I have no items of business, but uh, you don't have anything of me this morning.
The service office property?
Yeah, I can provide a glimpse into that. Essentially, you know, that was approved in the budget. And somehow, which I don't quite understand, they're tying it to another piece of legislation, which they have put a dollar amount to that, which is two, like two hundred and ten, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the property. So I guess it still has to go somewhat through controlling board and DAS, uh, which they're supposed to be getting all their stuff together so we can finally transfer that property, but it would be at over two hundred thousand, so.
Did they find out?
Which was higher than their initial case value.
Yeah, as I say, can be found out where that number came from?
We don't know for certain, um, you know, their first appraisal was around ten thousand dollars an acre. Then they asked for us to do an independent appraisal, which we did. That, you know, was anywhere, went back and forth from twenty to thirty thousand dollars. So I think they ended up settling basically on that twenty thousand dollar amount. That's what I assume at this point, based on our independent appraisal. Yeah, in the long run, it would have been better for us to buy like nine acres, uh, ten thousand dollars an acre. And for ninety thousand.
Interesting.
And not, you know, just going through the, going through the list. So I guess we're paying a hundred thousand for an acre. So two hundred and ten thousand give it to us, the number uh, that I've been given, so.
Well, I might call Stuart.
Yeah.
About the conversation we had.
Yeah, 'cause he's, he is somewhat in the middle of that, so. But at least the property was in the process of being entered.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Atkins?
Good morning. A couple things though. Uh, first, the briefs regarding the city of Dublin annexation are due today. So I'll be filing the brief on behalf of the board and I'll provide you with a courtesy out there of that signature review. Uh, I am also filing the motion to continue the after court hearing, which is set for the twenty fourth. And I, I spoke to the attorneys representing the city of Dublin. They're also available on that date. We're looking at alternate dates a week or two out, so I'm not a significant continuous. Uh, I, I also let you know, I believe it was last week, that um, I have a little short in the office over the next two weeks. But the, obviously the trial I had this morning resolved with the guilty plea and then the trial that was set for next Tuesday, uh, was continued out until the first of the year. So I'll be able to be here next week, Mr. Allen. Uh, I, I know that Dennis is here and perhaps he has an update and I'll, I'll let him provide that. But I did attend a ECA meeting last night and it was rather contentious. And, and I just wanna say that the issue regarding the potential CUs on agricultural property, the two CUs for uh, property over twenty acres is still a hot issue. And one of the things I would suggest as you move forward, both looking at the zoning amendment, is really how to track the situations where those two CUs are awarded and guaranteeing that they track with the parcel so we know what the mother parcel is. And, and I guess kind of give that some thought and how that is done. 'Cause I, I do think that'll be a continuing issue over time. Uh, the final thing I, I wanted to discuss or maybe just present to you, I printed off. I know there were questions the last couple of days regarding the tri-county jail count and the overage fees. Uh, and what I did, I, I brought a copy of the actual inmate list just for Madison County. And this is as of this morning, or it's like two fifty a year. So the, the list uh, is a total of fifty-six inmates for Madison County, actually down two from just yesterday. But I think what is important and perhaps helpful as you look through this list is that uh, it has, first of all, the, the days served, but it also has the specific charges that they're incarcerated on. And we've seen um, a stretch of, of cases involving high-level offenses, violent offender offenses, major drug offenders. So the, the number of individuals incarcerated is definitely up, but a lot of that has to do with felony offenses, which is unusual. I think in terms of number of individuals incarcerated at the felony level, it's probably the highest I've seen in five years. So I'll, I'll make sure you get a copy of this.
And does the level of charge, does that contribute to the expense? I mean?
Well, it contributes to whether or not they're incarcerated. Because the court sets a bond when they're charged.
Yeah.
So if you have, you have a murder charge, you're not gonna be given a signature bond, right?
Okay.
There's a high bond, which means they're incarcerated in jail during the tenancy of the case.
Yeah.
I gotta be honest, I really have no chance.
Sure.
That's all.
Gotcha. Thank you, appreciate it. Brian, engineer's office?
Yeah, good morning. Uh, maybe that's a couple uh, regular distransfers for you this morning. I'm talking about the preparing, um, but also one, uh, both of your, your year. Um, we do have a request in for next week, uh, for temporary payment. I don't know if I even got that to you yet, so we have paid the invoice to the contractor. We submitted that to ODOT, so we're gonna personally. It'll be about a month or so before we see that. So we'd like to, we'd like to get that cash back in our account for the time being. And then once we get the name from ODOT, you can get that back into your. So just a, just a heads up. Another thing we have, but I'm sending you a trail, this year's coming in this morning.
He's already scheduled.
Oh, has he? Okay.
Uh, I think it's November sometime, but I can get to that.
Oh, yeah. I guess.
Pretty good. Thank you, sir.
I wasn't aware that, that forty-two to twenty-nine, another round about there?
Yeah, I got the public notice, I'm gonna get a, we can see if he's up. I think that's like a twenty million project.
Twenty-eight, that's all.
I, I seen it was just an open being, they were gonna, that discussion, they're not, if you think we're doing, we're starting to start by that, I'm saying a notice. Yeah, um, I, I wouldn't be interested.
Yeah, we got it. Last week, I don't remember the date.
At your office.
Yeah.
October something like that.
I guess, and it's, hi.
It sounds like things are still progressing in progress, Silver's in forty-two, uh, they're working through property acquisition. That doesn't, that's changed. Still moving forward.
Or you know, both going around the circus.
There's one big round.
I don't, I kinda wondered whether we'll get a speaker. Yeah, right. Yeah, that, I mean, I think it was in twenty-four, two, I think that should be close, maybe. So then, I don't, that's definitely.
They're slowly through, through safety funding, so there must be a dump.
Okay, I'll protect them if they're just.
Yeah.
This one she is.
I don't see the cars or fields.
Yeah.
I'm pretty light.
And they're still slowly working on a fighting project on, on forty-two, between speed lane.
That's.
That thing is just.
That is crazy.
It has stolen for a year.
Me.
They've had multiple project managers. Um, I mean, I remember five years ago, we were, we were, we're trying to figure out what's the water line, so we get there before it, you know?
Yeah.
And that thing, they're underground for quite a few years. It's still definitely a long ass.
Yeah, I mean, we, we worked. Or just sleep, is that the word? With um, with ODOT to make sure, you know, to take their future plans into consideration while we ran that line. And yes, that, that line's.
I read it, it's a small script, but it, Steve and I said we saw, he had to. He's gonna push on, on the numbers, on the amounts.
That's it, there we go, between twenty-nine and speedway. It's just a short section.
It is.
Yeah, it's.
So the rest is already done.
Right. See if you. So I think you might have been hooked in after the fact.
Maybe it's, they're still just considering a term line?
Yes, a term line.
You have.
We had to, I do some.
Resolution that you can.
Snacks and.
He asked, or wanna go then, overages, could probably come by county jail. And I could send like all the.
He's wrong, okay?
Your.
Well, I didn't know what, what, 'cause you did a question about, it's like substantial amount, two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars.
Some dollars per month and a one last. The quarterly payments are fifty-eight thousand.
Probably considerable, really, well, our capacity has to expensory there. That would, that would, they send all these budgets, it would go up.
Yeah, and so that.
It was a seventy-eight percent increase.
But there's overages in there too. There's like, we're paying a seven thousand dollar overage, only ones, it's coming out of that, so all separate inwards.
Thank you.
And when you trust more, you don't need to. Here's how.
Can't win control three, too, but yeah, it doesn't.
Three hundred and ten.
There was not a fifty percent increase in the budget at all.
We've done the majority portion.
Oh, yeah, once you watch everything.
It's not just.
Fifty thousand.
Had been addressed over.
Four, that's how much.
Wait.
Oh, two hundred something.
Good happening.
You know, I can make the comments, I apologize for spaghetti, but I'm just saying, I know that was in the release. We were meeting, you know, the, the budget, you had it lined up.
You sleep in budget for that on case.
That's not a fifty percent increase. Yeah, that'll be our kind of share of, of, of that.
Am I reading that correctly? So it's saying, so we budgeted three-ten per quarter. Right, three-ten, nine eighty-six per quarter.
I'm, I, I guess I'm talking about the, the, the jail hole. I'm not talking about overages, I was talking about what was budgeted for.
As quarterly report.
The quarterly.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah, and when that, that would make sense, it went up. Um, you know, fifty thousand quarter, when you're talking a hundred and eight thousand, I think we, you know, all three counties have understood that that was the increase going into the data. I was a little confused, I thought maybe you thought that there was a fifty percent increase in our.
Go ahead. Yeah.
This is, this is the, this one's here. That's per quarter. So this is, it went from, was a fifty-eight thousand dollar increase from the, per quarter over last year.
Make sure we.
Which would be about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in years increase.
Yeah, fifty thousand quarter increase.
So it's.
Fifty-eight thousand a month.
Or, or.
Let me get to the resolution this soon, I, what I saw. Go free to carry on.
Ben? Um, the last meeting.
Yeah. No brief, yeah, over brief. Um, no, I just, I've been working on transferring everything, um, for Rob and other folks on, uh, for different projects and things. Um, when I started a year back in point thirteen, I was able to reach out to Sean, who was here before. To ask questions, I would make sure, put each company, get it through there, I mean, ah, maybe it's in person, it's always, so, um.
And you, you know, obviously you've been here for almost four years, eight years prior to that, and Shaker, you have a lot of contacts, are you gonna leave?
Oh, yeah, a spreadsheet, I'm sorry, for instance, for the reporting for the amendments I filed, because those are all the contracts in LA, Minneapolis, I think I got that all. I'll have contact utilities, you know, again, my goal is to offer my contacts where needed, but the goal would be to make, to have that. So, no, yeah, yeah, that, that'll be all in place, so, yeah.
Very good. Appreciate it, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Just wanted to, um, give you a little bit of information ahead of, uh, I believe the October twentieth meeting, where we have CEO, A, 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 N, CEO, Tivoy, helping with the plan, coming in. Uh, I met with this, these individuals, uh, a couple of weeks ago, saw its age and, um, the group. And, uh, basically, from my understanding, they were under more of a Columbus control. And now they are getting out from underneath Columbus and, and basically forming a CLOG, which is a council of governments. And they would like for us to join that CLOG as well. There's not any financial commitment, funding stays the same. Everything stays the same except for basically who they report to. And they feel, um, moved out from underneath Columbus. Um, they can better represent the central Ohio region and not just focus in Columbus and, and that area. Not that that's what they did, but they just, they feel that they'll have a. My thought they were overrepresented. Columbus was, so. So they just, uh, they feel this move will make it, uh, a little easier to, uh, work as a region. Maybe which includes Madison County, so several other, three other counties have already joined the CLOG and they'll be asking Madison County to do so as well, October twentieth, I believe, and even then. And here's some information, feel free.
Thank you.
To read it. Can you leave her? Time? But yeah, there's, there's not much of any change there, Sean. It'll be pretty, you know, pretty easy for us. Uh, a nice thing I have on my list is, uh, Humane Society of Madison County budget increase. I believe they were starting to broach the subject, uh, the last time they were here, but they ran out of time. And, um, they will be returning, any, what they will be returning, or have we scheduled that yet? Haven't scheduled that yet, 'cause I wanted to run this by you guys first. So, um, they would like a budget increase or come in and at least lead their case, uh, for an increase in the county's contribution. And Meg asked, was it a three percent, Amy? Was that what their request was? So they're, um, currently provide, and I've got too many papers to share. I don't have any. These is under all management. So our current allocation is a hundred and four thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Um, that's a three percent increase. Would be an additional three thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and sixty-seven cents for a total of one hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. This would be to, uh, supply care, shelter and adoption services for animals in Madison County as well as maintain operational stability. So, you know, this is, we haven't increased this, Amy helped me out, but we increased it three percent last year. And maybe, we had a big jump at one point.
Big jump, oh, weird.
But I can't remember exactly when that was. So it was about ten, ten thousand dollars, I suppose, if I remember correctly. 'Cause we, we started out, it was like sixty-eight thousand, give or take, and then it dumped it, but, so, you know. But with everything else, costs have increased. So accordingly, they're asking for a higher contribution from Madison County. With that said, there, I don't see any possible way that we could provide our statutory requirement on our end. Do you have any numbers on how many you have? Get all drop.
No.
Yeah. We're turned in. I just shared it 'cause I emailed you this morning.
Can you clarify that statement, how we would provide our statutory requirement on our year?
So we are required to provide a animal shelter.
Right.
Uh, so we partner with the Humane Society to provide that service in conjunction with all the other services that they provide. Those numbers are currently, sorry, Rob, those numbers are current as of yesterday. Uh, now, I believe, actually, we just, that's all the agencies, you know, it, it, it tracks every dog brought in at a law enforcement level that would, they would act as the shelter. So I think we're at a hundred and twenty-two dog before this year. What day, when was that about a dog, another day, the dog? Yeah, so what I'm saying, at a hundred and eight thousand dollars would still, uh, a decent deal, I don't think we could operate our own shelter for, for that kind of money. Right. And it's one of the, and it's, and it's not just that, obviously, they, they take in a lot more than what we get to.
Sure.
It, that, we just increased the, the dog fees last, the last. I'll see if that carries the various issue moment, it does bind into a, it does bind into a big, uh, you know, funding, that, you know, we also have to pay for deputy, buy gas, buy, buy government. I don't, you know, I get that the increases, and we can't do that for that coverage, but I hope that it's the task of, you know, things happen in the face. I mean, increased dog tags, um, you know, it's hard to get that. Yeah, and I thought we have, have not increased dog tag fees for several years. No, we just did this.
Did last year.
We did last year.
Did last year.
Yeah, and, and.
Well, before that, there wasn't.
Statutory has to be done by like a dollar or fifty or something.
Ten dollars.
Yeah, two dollars increments of two dollars or something. Yeah, yeah, you know, you don't wanna get to the point where you're charging so much, and you said, well, I don't buy my dog, I don't make the fee. Right. And then you don't get any, right, so, yeah. And those have been established. Yeah. Those that, the dog tag fees have been established, so.
I have no issue increasing it. Is there any reason we wouldn't discuss this as part of a broader budget discussion? Is it, they, they need to know now for their own?
Um, they didn't really s- they didn't really say this, um, for the twenty-twenty-six budget. So we can incorporate this in our budgeting process, they're probably just giving us a heads up. They know we're in the budget process right now, so it acts, it's actually pretty timely.
Yeah.
Um, for us. Um, yeah, I'll do the numbers, I'll be able to budget appropriately and develop account. Yeah, yeah, so. If you under the increase. And I just wanted to bring it to board's attention, if there was some appetite for it, or if you wanted for them to come in and, uh, give some more information, or it was a heck no, don't waste your time, our timing there, so.
I've been thinking, since they were just here for half an hour and forty-five minutes, I don't, I don't think they come back.
No reason. Okay, so I'll make note then, um, and Amy will make note as well to remind me, not remind her, um, so that will increase, uh, by, by three percent.
I'll make it to one.
For twenty point six to one hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars is sixty-seven cents.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nice.
Today's a winning day, I guess. So I don't know if you guys noticed or not, but we've milled, and Brian, I'm looking at you for technical assistance here. Um, we milled the Jones Building parking lot and the EMA parking lot. In doing so, in the Jones Building, they got to a portion of the lot that did not have any base to it whatsoever. So they milled the asphalt and it dirt. Um, so their recommendation, and Dan's been working with Nate Ernst, and, you know, he's a great resource there, so I appreciate that. Um, you know, he's saying it's probably not a good idea that that, that asphalt is not gonna hold up for a period of time, a long period of time, and would recommend, um, putting a basin. And that would, uh, incur a fifty thousand, fifty thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollar, uh, change order increase.
Thirty thousand.
I'm sorry, yes. So fifty thousand was the, was the first, um, amount. So the change order is thirty thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars. Bringing the grand total to eighty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars for the Jones parking lot. EMA doesn't appear to have any issues like that, so that was. What's that?
Was it just part of the one that's older?
Yeah.
Okay, how deep did it, was it?
It is.
I mean, exactly what you'd want, you'd wanna be on six inches of three or four base.
Yeah, so the change order is, uh, fifteen by fifty foot area. Um, remove ten inches of soil, supply geogrid, eight inches of base, then two inches of, like, two intermediate course asphalt.
So I'll be a little over there on the, on base. Overkill for thirty thousand dollars.
Well, the, the problem that we're up against right now is we have a parking lot over there that's in in disrepair or being repaired, I mean, it's basically been ground and, and they can park on it for a period of time, but, you know, we need to keep this ball rolling, so. Out of my lane as far as, sort of, my knowledge.
Any of which the leave and geo, if ever, if ever did, or just put in eight or six inches, same deal.
Yeah.
And you probably have more of a buildup there than what all the rest of the parking lot.
So at this point in time, I would recommend a, uh, a resolution to approve the change order up to, and not to exceed thirty thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars. But I'll go back and take Brian's recommendations of removing some of that material, which will bring that price down. But I would like to.
I would take his recommendation.
Try not to fill up one section or open one, but what the other side just does. Doesn't make it.
Anyway, there's not gonna be a semi parked up.
You just need something better.
Well, yeah, and I don't know if that area was part of the old alley that ran through there at one point in time or not, but it is what it is. I'm surprised it held up as well as it did.
No maintenance, basically.
Yeah, no maintenance and, but it was pretty much just cars, I don't. Yeah, no maintenance and but it was pretty much just cars, I imagine. SUVs and that sort of thing, so without heavy. Heavy trucks being parked on it, so. But that would be my recommendation is like uh the approved the change order up to thirty thousand two hundred and eighty four dollars. And I'll go back and work with uh Brian and Nate to try to reduce that house.
If a motion.
Yeah, listen.
Second. First and the second. Any other discussion? None heard. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yeah.
Dr. Sneakus.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Uh last thing I just wanted to mention um was we are into the budget process. Now you're asking everybody to have at least their uh. We asked them to have the preliminary numbers in and now we're asking for. Pretty solid numbers, uh if at all possible, and start generating some of that information that you've asked for. So we may overwhelm you with um with information, so but at least you'll be able to have something to to go off of.
Very good.
Um moving into. Next year and our game plan is to. Break it up with the board meetings to do two, three, four offices at a time versus. Trying to do it all in one day, because I think that just overruns everybody. We've also asked for some pretty uh detailed information on if if there is a budget. A significant budget increase or decrease and why that is. If you created a new position, eliminated a new position, you know, so so on. Uh and provide that information to you. And then if you would like to have those offices come in and and have a deeper conversation on those increases or decreases with the board, that time will be available.
Very good.
Sound good?
That all sounds good.
All right, sounds good. And I'd like to thank David Kell for his time. And here in Madison County, it's been a pleasure. Sure, I'll be listening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Wish you the best.
Thank you.
Amy?
A resolution reappointing Brad Reardon to Madison County Board of Zoning Field.
So. Second. First and the second. Any other discussion? None heard. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Dr. Sneakus.
Yeah.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
A resolution adopting the Madison County twenty twenty five local hazard mitigation plan update.
So moved.
Second. First and the second. Any other discussion? None heard. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Dr. Sneakus.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
A resolution assigning authority to the Director of Madison County Department of Job and Family Services to act as the Madison County Board of Commissioners designee. For approving inter-county adjustments of allocated funds.
So moved.
Second. For the first and the second. Any other discussion? None heard. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Dr. Sneakus. Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
A resolution approving the payment of invoices for the Madison County Auditorium.
I'm moved.
Second. First and the second. Any other discussion? None heard. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Dr. Sneakus.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
A resolution approving budget adjustments for the Madison County Port House and Facilities budgets.
So moved.
Second. For the first and the second. Any other discussion? None heard. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Doctor Sneakus.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
A resolution approving an increase of appropriations to the Tri-County Regional Jail Contract and Services Expense Line.
So moved.
Second. For the first and the second. Any other discussion?
Yes.
And these way even with.
Thank you. Um so yeah, just want to make sure that I understand how the memo and the resolution match. So the resolution says. Five hundred and fifty four nine eighty six, so basically five hundred and fifty five thousand is the amount that we've been billed. For the fourth quarter twenty twenty five. But we're increasing. Our allocation two hundred and forty four thousand.
There's some money in the line still, so we don't need that till fifty five hundred and fifty four. So we're just increasing it the amount that we think we'll need for the end of the year, which will cover this bill and any possible. I don't think that will be overages that maybe so.
So what period of time does the Q four twenty twenty five invoice cover? Is it covering the previous?
It covers like. The last four. The fourth one.
The the third.
Overtake by third, I don't know, whatever the month is broke up, it's. Quarterly.
Are we paying in advance or are we paying? Back? Because it says fourth quarter twenty twenty five. So are we paying?
We're paying, we don't pay any twenty. We didn't pay any twenty four and twenty five, so we're probably paying advance, I would think. I mean, this was a. This doesn't count over, just that they decide their budget and they rule us four times a year for the budget that they that they decided to begin any year. So these don't change throughout the year. So we're they're billing us for October, November, December. And then they bill us separately if there's overages, so we'll get a separate invoice. The fourth one is October. Yeah, so we're this is. So this is. Yes, this is final payment for the.
So it sounds like the bill is in advance on a quarterly basis. We pay Q four ahead of time. And then they charge us any overages maybe for the prior quarter at the same time that charges for the Q four, basically.
Correct.
So any overages for the third quarter are going to come in, plus we're going to get a bill for fourth quarter going forward.
Okay, so that that makes sense. So the two forty four increase. Is that partially to increase the amount for the future or is that two forty four all going to this bill?
No, this is how much we think that we're going to need for the rest of the year.
For the rest of the year, which is just the fourth quarter. Which is the bill we're paying.
No, we're paying the third. Is it third, what are we paying for? I don't know. I don't have to pay. Damn.
Fourth quarter twenty twenty five. And fourth one.
Paying the fourth quarter. And so we're adding two hundred and forty four.
It says there's money in the line. We're not, we're not totally zero on the line. There's another two hundred and ten thousand in the line now. So we 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 need that much to pay the rest of this, to pay this bill and any possible overages that come in for the rest of the year.
So we under budgeted from last year.
Yeah.
What we did.
We use twenty twenty fourth years for twenty twenty five.
Right. Do we have any idea how much we under budgeted? That's what I'm trying to get.
Yeah, probably that.
About two hundred thousand.
Two hundred.
Right there.
We were two hundred and forty four thousand short.
But I think.
For this quarter or for the whole year?
For the whole year. So I I suspect the whole year. So what you guys have been doing is you've been paying the bill because there was enough money in to pay for it, even though the bill wasn't. You know, you see what I'm saying? So now it's to the end and guess what? Now we got to make it up. Which we didn't, you know, if had we known that in the beginning, which we did, we could have budgeted, put some money in before this had come up.
The chairman told me you guys are on the board. Did they send us kind of a figure ahead of time of what they project for like they asked us twenty twenty since so that you guys can budget appropriate? It sounded to be like somebody just just budgeted the amount for the year twenty twenty four and 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 omitted increasing what the increase.
So it sounds like they don't give us like an, yeah, I mean, what I would like to see from them is like.
No, I think they're, I think they.
They give us an estimate ahead of time?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So like I started with the number of twenty twenty five, we should see an estimate of what we think the twenty twenty six budget is more.
Yes, last year you guys gave me that number. Where that came from, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Very well, the for the Tri-County.
Right.
Board. Is. I assume that's where you got.
So it's soon. It it sounds like they gave us a bad.
No.
No. No.
In there. It was in in our defense, it was a new program we were trying to use. It was my first year doing a budget. So it just didn't happen.
We have the numbers. It didn't get in there. If we didn't have the numbers, it didn't. So I don't know where the ball dropped.
I don't get the budget. Well, let me retract that.
Yeah, I'm just.
Maybe you didn't give me the numbers. Maybe I ran that number by you guys and and you thought that was going to be okay. Because what we did was. Um we took the twenty twenty four numbers because we keep all our numbers flat when we go into the budget process. So we we kept that number flat. Which would have been one million nine hundred and. Sixty seven thousand two hundred and ninety four dollars based on twenty twenty four. So that's what we budgeted, but it looks like our actual number, you know, I assume cost increase. To run the jail. So our actual number at the end of the at the end of the year is going to be two million two hundred some dots about.
The simple term is that we didn't take into account the increase last year to put it in our budget. That's what happened.
Yeah.
They continued to pay because there was money in there. Now the money ran out, fourth quarter, so now we got to make it up. That's that's all.
Yeah, yeah.
So it comes out to like twenty thousand dollars a month. Sure, no, I thought it was eating out, you know.
And then that total number does include the overage. That we just experienced, which was significant. And we can see some overages at the end of the year. Is there any way to speed up the process of how long the prison will stay there?
Geez, to cut him loose is what you're saying.
No, no, don't cut him loose.
I'd like you to have the conversation with the judge.
You know what I'm saying? Because if they're waiting there three weeks before they're seen, we had to pay three with with a. Baby sitter.
Prosecutor's office pays very close attention to the jail list, who's in custody and who's here isn't. So do all the court systems. Um in terms of speeding up the process, I I can only think of one situation and really I don't think it would be. It wouldn't be that much of an impact and that's essentially after an individual has been sentenced to prison. Making sure they're transported from the jail to prison. Sometimes there are some small delays there, but other than that, I really don't see. Your shit has to be deported. Right. But I I really do think that uh in terms of the overages.
Well, like I I think, do we have a.
Exceptional.
Do we have somebody in the prison system right now? I I I don't, my memory, I don't know. It's been there a very long time.
In Tri-County?
Yeah.
There's one on its way out. There's.
That one thing about I know what he's talking about.
There's one individual who has been in custody as of this morning, one thousand two hundred and sixty eight days. And yeah, he is in a position where he could be.
What's that?
Right, yeah, I think it's time to transfer him to the prison. So it's probably, we don't have.
I. Well, that's 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 basically my question. How did we get that one person to move through the system?
It's. It's one person now.
Yeah. And they get additional time for acts while he was there in.
No, yeah, I can't. It's simply a matter of the, there's been a judgment. And so then it takes the the court processing, the paper word, the judge signing, the entry that's being sorted through. The clerk's office, the jail credit being computed. And then the warrant to convey to actually remove him from Tri-County to CRC to be classified through the D O T M L, so it's all everything.
And also, if there's a little extra money left over at the end of the year, we usually don't take that money to use it for our budget. Usually the three counties usually agree to leave the money in there because there's there's repairs, there's doors, there's showers that go down. There there, you know, their uh plate washer breaks down and those are expensive as anything, you know. So we leave that money in there so we don't have to ask the counties every time to give more money. We use the overages that.
Carry over.
To carry over money, I'm sorry, to carry over money to pay for those things that need to be done. And then how old is that? That's that's twenty five year old building and or better.
December of two thousand.
Yeah, twenty five years old. So you know, things are starting to break and.
Any idea where that fund stands? It sounds like it's been.
It's about eight hundred thousand, I believe.
Carryover.
Yeah.
I I knew one of the last.
Don't quote me on that, but I think it's that much and we just authorize, you know, some doors and.
I think they'd be.
Yeah.
The reefer, you need to re.
Air conditioner.
Two hundred thousand dollar jobs. It's, yeah.
I can get that if you want.
Just sounds like it's been in there since.
It's been, it's been adding, but like when the when the uh. You have to supply the the prisoners, I use the word them, a uh, you know, a place where. They're treated like humans, right? So if the air conditioner goes down. You got, you got to fix it. And instead of asking the county's money, use these overages to pay for that.
And usually our partner is from the Indian Champagne County, so we'd like to do that.
Yeah.
And we are reverse for hundreds.
Right.
We anticipate giving a a budget from them for twenty twenty six, a projected budget.
I'd say they didn't do it last time. I suspect just.
I was expecting some orders coming in. Yeah, that's how we give it to Rob again.
Yeah, so we have.
County will give it to Rob, but we'll give it to Rob.
Yeah, somebody has twenty point six numbers so that can be more.
After it is sent it. Hold me.
Very good. I think we now have a first, we have a first and a second. If we've had our discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Thank you all for the discussion. Yes.
Dr. Sneakus.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
A resolution approving the contract in the Madison County Board of Developmental Disabilities Parking Lot Improvements Project.
I'm moved. Captain.
One first and a second. Any other discussion? None heard. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Dr. Sneakus. Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
A resolution approving a transfer in the twenty twenty five ditch maintenance budget.
I'm moved. Second.
First and the second. Any other discussion? None heard. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Dr. Sneakus.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
A resolution approving changes to the twenty twenty five ditch maintenance budget.
So moved.
All right.
The first and the second. Any other discussion? None heard. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Dr. Sneakus.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
A resolution approving a transfer, approving a transfer in the twenty twenty five ditch maintenance budget.
I'm moved. Second.
First and the second. Any other discussion? None heard. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Dr. Sneakus.
Yeah.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
A res- a resolution approving Steve Adams to the Madison County Rural Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Second. For first and the second. Any other discussion? None heard. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Dr. Sneakus.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Resolution amending the State Route one sixty one zoning overlay. Who want to talk about?
Yeah, I think we have that on the schedule.
Uh last one, a resolution approving the Madison County Commissioner's application for local. We was kind of talking about that too, so.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
No, it's a yes. No, thank you.
Let's dig around. Take a road.
Fifteen minutes.
We say that one. Eight hundred thousand.
I sent you the number.
Five, you.
Yeah.
Nobody even knows how street those. From eighty two fifty five. I even know.
Oh, you know, yes.
If you know.
Did you order if you needed?
You took that. That street was.
Hi.
No, it's your monster.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably.
What's the one sixty one?
Is that any of that?
Yeah, oh, okay, sorry.
Okay.
Yep, we're.
Three yearly, so I'm just about it.
That's okay. You go momentum is strong. Well, I gotta get a couple of things done this morning, but I gotta go to Cleveland Saturday, so.
We know what changes we gave, we know what we're hiding.
I think it's gonna be a.
I voted proclamation that's been approved that morning. I said that was been changed.
And from that part. I think we have enough of this then to not be six or seven. Which I probably didn't expect if it's all. But sure, knowing about this, I'm just going to be, you know, so you guys can all. Situation where else to. Kind of. So anyway, no. That's right. And they are, you know, we're reading.
What's that?
You want me to read it?
Yeah.
Show you this. Right, you're just concerned. It's gonna creep the noise. Yeah, I mean, there's something.
He's saying.
You have no one to love it. That's right. Yeah.